Yeah. Okay, welcome everyone. We are at the Legacy, at the boardroom in the Legacy Camp, on the Legacy Campus for our Cache County Board of Education meeting. It is Thursday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and we will have a roll call.
Larry Jepson, board member. Randall Bagley, board member.
Steve Norton, superintendent.
Roger Pulsford, board member.
Terry Rhodes, board member.
Kathy Christensen, board member.
Jeff Nielsen, board member.
Dale Hanson, business administrator.
Thank you. Jeff will lead us in the pledge and the mission statement. Oh, Chris Corcoran is excused.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world.
Thank you. We will start into our recognitions, and man, we should probably just take turns. Larry, do you want to read the Teachers of the Year?
Okay. We are recognizing the Teachers of the Year from Mountain Crest, Tyler Hanson, who teaches science; from Nibley, Kathy Larkin, who is the kindergarten teacher; from North Park, Allison Sorensen, who is a second grade teacher; and from Providence, Melissa Chugg, who's a fifth grade teacher.
Congratulations to all those Teachers of the Year. We appreciate that they, all that they do, and to benefit so many students in our schools. Randall, do you want to read the next one?
Yes, we'd like to recognize and congratulate the Skyview High School two thousand and twenty-one for A State Girl Swimming Champions, and congratulate them on a job well done.
Okay, we'd like to congratulate the Skyview High School Girls Basketball for being the 4A State Champions of two thousand and twenty-one. Congratulations to them.
And we also would like to congratulate and recognize Mountain Crest High School's Girls Wrestling Champions. They are the twenty twenty-one 4A State winners. Have they always had a wrestling team?
That's the first one.
This is their first year? This is their first year of girls wrestling.
Okay, that's what I was kind of thinking. Woo-hoo, way to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yeah, so the Fall two thousand and twenty Stock Market Game and Vestryight Competitions, the Nibley and Lincoln Students were first place winners, and congratulations to them on that great achievement. Maybe they can manage my portfolio.
No kidding.
So fun to have so many great things happening in our district. And do we have any public input? No public input? All right, well, I will, we will move on to the consent agenda then and take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Are there any questions or concerns? Okay, we'll vote on that then.
All the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Thank you, Dale. Okay, moving on to our action agenda, the first item on the agenda is a request for approval of the Mountain Crest High School School and Trust Plan Amendment. And we had this to read in the interim between our last meeting and this one. I assume that Mike can answer questions if anyone has some. Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the Mountain Crest High School Amendment for their School and Trust Plan.
I second it.
Any questions or concerns for Mike? All right, we'll vote on that.
Okay, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
All right. The second item on the action agenda is a request for approval of INTECH Academy updates, and that will be presented by Principal Jason Stinger.
Probably gonna have to turn that on, Jason. Pull it up a little, top close.
All right. We have three updates that we are proposing. The first is a Trust Land Plan Amendment for the current year, and we have not needed to spend some money we had planned on spending in tuition at Utah State, and so we'd like to reallocate that money to buy textbooks. We expanded to seventh and eighth grade this year, so we have some need for textbooks and e-texts, and that's what we plan on doing. And I recommend that be approved by the board.
All right.
That's previously been approved by our board and our parent involvement council.
Excellent. Do you want us to approve those individually or can do it individually?
Likely if we're audited, we'll need that.
Okay, all right.
Separate.
Well, I will take a motion then for this Trust Land Amendment, Trust Land Plan Amendment for INTECH.
I move that we approve the INTECH updates on their amendment to redistribute the funds.
Second.
Any questions for Principal Stinger? All right.
This is all set up as one, one item for me to set up a motion again.
So do you want us to do it verbal, to do it individual?
Be the best.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem. I don't think we have to do it individually. We can just do all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any opposed? None? So that one passes?
All right, the second update is our Trust Land Plan for next year, and it is similar to plans we've had in the past. We seems to be working, so we keep doing the same thing. But we are proposing to spend about five thousand dollars for salary and benefits for training and an additional three thousand to, for the training services and to get people there, and sixteen thousand dollars in texts and e-texts again to expand our, with our current student expansion and replace old texts, and then twenty thousand dollars to assist in our early college program to pay for the services from U.S.U. And are there any questions about that that I'm going to go through in this plan?
How, how is that going, having seventh and eighth grade in?
It's going as well as it can go during a COVID year, so there's of course a learning curve, but it's going well, and we hope, not only did we want an increase in numbers, but we're hoping that in the future we see that students are better prepared, especially in math, that they're not checking out in math and in science in the junior high years, and that they're better prepared in high school, and that really predicts success then in our early college program and in our STEM programs and our CTE programs.
Excellent, okay. Well, I will take a motion for the Fiscal Year Twenty-two Trust Land Plan for INTECH Academy.
I move that we approve the Fiscal Year Twenty-two Trust Land Plan.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And the next one?
All right. The Cache Board is our charter authorizer, and we have one amendment that we are proposing to our charter agreement, and that is in representation condition number two, just adding that consistent with USBE rules related to learner validated enrollment, INTECH may leverage online or remote learning for individual terms, courses, days, or individual class periods. And we've spent a whole year now with learner validated enrollments and online learning. We want to be able to continue with that competency. We don't want to become an online school, but when we see a situation that's advantageous, we want to be able to do that.
Excellent. Do you use any of the district's online stuff, or do you come up?
No, we, we do a synchronous online right now.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, we, we haven't done it. But we would be open to it if that's what's a good thing.
Do any of your students use, speaking of online, do any of your students use any, do they participate in USU classes online?
Yes, so our early college students participate online if the course is offered online. And then, of course, the broadcast, not only is it broadcast, a lot of that has also been online as well due to COVID.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, I will take a motion to approve the charter agreement with INTECH Collegiate Academy.
I make a motion that we approve the ICA Charter Agreement with INTECH for July two thousand and twenty-one.
All in favor? Or did you have a question?
I was gonna second it.
Oh, okay. Kathy seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? The voting is unanimous for all three documents. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We will move on to our reports agenda and have an amendment for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school fees, presented by Mike Lickie and Principal Dave Swenson.
I don't know if he had that on or not. Maybe he did. Okay, looks like he did.
It doesn't sound like it.
Yeah, the, just to tail on to what Jason was doing here tonight, about, about three weeks ago, we had a, the state called and did an audit, charter school audit, because where we charter INTECH, they were going through a process checking to see if Jason was doing what he should be doing, where he chartered by Cache School District, but yet he has another board at INTECH, and he's just being very, very careful to make sure that he's covering everything he should be doing and meeting all of the requirements, and he should actually be coming to you every year, and I believe Jason's done a pretty good job doing that, to make sure you're aware of things. But it's not like we're really driving him down there, but they're a great school to be part of, but he still is accountable to this board on some certain state requirements with that.
Would the district ever want him to have his students participate in the same online as ours, or are we so totally separated that we don't have to worry about it at all?
You know, I, I'd have to talk to Jason to see what he's doing, where he's doing synchronous, or it's live. You know, I'm not sure how he's pulling that off, or if he's video and broadcasting right out of a class, a live classroom going on, or what, for sure.
From my experience, substitute teaching at INTECH, they, synchronous means just that every class period, the students who are not present are expected to be logged in, and if they're not, then it counts as an absence.
Yeah.
And so they're supposed to be logged in, and they do have a camera on for the teacher during the class, and the, anyway, so it, it is, they're, they're teaching online and in class at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, and they're a small enough school right now, you know, good for them. If they can pull that off and make it work, and that doesn't mean that can't be something we, we look at on some other options, so, anyway. Back to school fees. You know, we, by state law, we were to have our twenty-one, twenty-two school fees approved before April, which we did. Okay? And, but since we did that, there's been a couple of changes with programs that we've had, and that's why I'm back here, is to do an amendment to the plan. And we still have to have at least a minimum of two public meetings, so this is just the first of it. But the two, if you go to page two on what I attached under section G, I'll, I'll do the one first with IHC. After we had already approved the fees, several of our schools work with IHC, and they do a conditioning class, and they've always had this forty-dollar fee, but IHC came and says, we, we need to raise that fee to cover our costs with going on the program, so the, the principal suggested on that one, the fee was forty dollars, but to move that to fifty dollars to cover their, their cost, and that's all they're trying to do, is cover the, the bill they get from IHC for that class. So that was unforeseen, even knowing, and IHC took note, knowing that if there needs to be a change, you know, we, we try to get this before our board, before April, and so they would look at that if, if they needed to do something to pass, but this is the first time they've raised that for, how long you been doing it? Three or four years, conditioning, IHC? Yeah, and they've, they've never changed anything until just right now on it, so that's one that we're asking. And the second one there is, is in red, the Dance Company, four hundred dollars. You know, a lot of times we do these little times at classes, but we're being very, very careful that anytime we do a, a class such as this, we bring it to the board. This is really affecting one school at this time, and it's Dave, and, and I'm gonna have Dave come up and explain it. The other schools aren't really interested in doing this one right now, but there is a need, and I'll, Dave explained it at Green Canyon, but we still need to have it on the, the fee schedule in order to allow Dave to run that class. So Dave, you want to come up and just give them a quick explanation of the course?
So this is different than drill?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is, this is a curricular club class that would be, it's called the Dance Company. It's under the state code. It's, they're allowed an art and a PE credit. Most of the Davis School District's schools are doing that. It's for dancers or girls, well, I guess not girls, anybody, that maybe don't, don't make the drill team, or they don't do the cheerleading, but they love the, the form of dance, and it goes beyond just drill and competition. This is a dance company that is designed to increase the dance technique and choreography and, and performance, and it covers all the styles. It covers the, they'll be, allows them to grow technically as a dancer to improve their diversity in, in the different styles of ballet, jazz, contemporary, modern, tap, ballroom, and hip-hop. And some drill team girls are, want to be interested into, into it, and some of the, some of the cheerleaders, but it's also for another, maximizing, maximizing opportunities for other students that don't really want to compete, but it's something like a show choir class, that they, they have that class, it's a two trimester class. They actually have a state competition that they'll perform at, but it's all done in class, not actually. They may take a couple of days after school, right before the state competition, but they'll do something like when our band performs to, to their parents, they'll do something like that once a trimester. They'll do maybe a halftime activity. But the main thing is the girls actually at the state competition, they, they are, are taught the techniques, that they actually have to do their own chore, choreography, and then present that in state. They can do it singly, individually, or they can do that as an ensemble group, but, and so Brittany Bailey is a teacher at our school, who is, she's been in the Nutcracker and Ballet. She's been in a trained Ballet and Modern Dance, Contemporary Dance, and so she's been working on this for the last couple of years, but now she's got enough interest of girls that feels like we want to, we're still looking, they're gonna do a tryout, and we're still, it's based on the numbers if we can fill the class, but we have enough now that we'd like to, to move forward with this. They take a dance one and a dance two before they, they, they come into this class. But the, the fee would include their, some, the, would include the state tournament. It would include some of their, the, bringing in some of the, the guests, some choreographers to help train them too, as well as her. It's also the uniforms and those kind of things. And, and so participation fee, costume rentals, production costs, choreographers. These, and, and does not include some of the dan, the dancers' personal clothing, a workshop, and then the eighty-five dollar fee for each participant to the Utah Dance Gala, which is the state competition that they do. So that's, we'd like to present that. I think we have enough interest now to, and we, we didn't, last year, we, we, we were gonna try to get it to go, but we didn't quite have enough, but I think we have enough girls now, but we're gonna try to push this through, so.
Is this, is this a class that if the student can't afford it, then your school would pay the four hundred dollars for it?
Yeah, it'd be a fee waiverable class, yeah. They, they do, they, they would like to, they have some, they would like to do some fundraising, and those, those, all the proceeds to that fundraising would go to offset the cost to the girls with that, and so. It's called, under the state core, the, the code, which I have, and it's, it is, it's called Dance Company. Bear River has a Dance Company. Logan did, I don't know if they still do, but I know they did at one time, but it's, so, anyway. That's, so we've, we've got a personnel who's really young, whole about it, that's proficient in it, and I think we've got enough girls that would like to go down that road, so.
Cool.
Any questions?
Nope.
Well.
And, and it may not, I mean, again, it depends on the numbers.
Right.
We're gonna start trying out in a couple of weeks, and so.
Schools on the West Edge Front have been doing this for a long time, have been doing Dance Company for a long time.
As our schools grow and we get more numbers, and there's more opportunities for kids to participate and want to continue. Some of these will also, some of them do dance already at these, at these dance places, but a lot of, she's got enough girls that will say, hey, I'd rather take this as a class. It'd be a two, it'd be a second, third trimester class, and they compete in the spring.
Great, sounds good, sounds fun.
We should go join, we should join. You do know that Terry and I are former Vastons.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, if you ever need our help.
Choreography right here.
Right, but besides that, I was in Dance Company at Bingham High School.
Oh, oh, she, she's really advanced. From slapping?
From slapping.
So if I ask you to stand up and do an arabesque, you could do that?
Well, I, I can tell you how to do it.
What's that?
I could tell you how to do it. Yeah, there you go, very good.
I've been doing drill too much.
Very good, very good.
Because cameras are all over.
That's right, everywhere, there are cameras everywhere.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dave.
So, well, like I say, this is, this is under, this is an action item tonight, but right now there's just one school interested in doing this, and that would be Green Canyon.
Well, it's, it, like most specialty classes, I, I think this is instructor specific. And so if you didn't already have an instructor for the class, it would be really hard to implement it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's all we have then on that one.
Okay. All right, thank you. We will move on to the two thousand and twenty-one School Land Trust Funding allocations, also presented by Mike Lickie.
And all I did is attach that on the agenda, so you could see the allocation that our schools are receiving for next year, and it, it grows every year. And the state finally has its sight up to where schools can go in now and actually enter their twenty-one, twenty-two plan.
Oh, that's a relief.
And our goal is to get the, the twenty-one, twenty-two plans to the board the ver, the very first week of May, before your first meeting in May, because we have to have this approved for sure in May to have the funding flow. So even though they messed up their timeline on the system, we're still have to hit a, a target for approval from the board. So they're, they're uploading things right now, but you can see that's quite a bit of money for our schools. And.
Do you have a total?
You know, I knew somebody was gonna ask, and I didn't put that in a spreadsheet to add all that up, but Dale could add it up quick in his head, and he could.
If he had a ten key.
You know. Yeah.
Is that really what it is?
That's what I thought you'd be doing, just throwing out numbers all the time.
Yeah, yeah. So when I looked at that, I knew somebody would ask me, well, what's the total on that? Let's take a guess, and then it'll be, you know, it'll be, whoever wins will have something. I'm gonna say it's like two point three.
It's impressive, whatever.
It is.
It is impressive.
It is a lot of money.
It's so, so great.
To meet their greatest academic needs. So anyway, the plans are coming.
And, and one of the most amazing things to me is that Utah as a state is one of the few states left in the, in the nation that hasn't gotten rid of their school trust lands. The state legislature still allows it to be used as it was intended, and that's pretty impressive to me.
Do you have the TSSA totals? I was asked that this morning at a school community council.
I think Dale's waiting on the final budget number on that, aren't you, when you have your budget meetings coming up?
Yeah, it's actually first next week.
Yeah, that's, then we'll have them, and then we'll be rolling that out real quick to be bringing that to the board.
Okay.
So.
When did you say? Next week? It'll be out?
Monday, Tuesday.
Monday, Tuesday, okay.
Monday and Tuesday.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mike. So the next item, the third item on the report's agenda, it will be presented by Dale, which is Malouh CRA proposal.
A couple of months ago, Superintendent Mike and I met with the Malouh Corporation out there in Nibley, and they were actually addressed by the Nibley City Representatives, where they're wanting to put together, it's now called a CRA, which is a 2021 reinvestment authority. Every year, I swear, they change the initial R, but they're the same thing basically. Wanting to see if the school district was willing to participate in setting this up. Malouh Corporation is across the nation, and they've been wanting to develop. The office in Nibley is a major corporate center for the, the business. In Ohio, there's a, where they have another one of their plants, they're getting strong encouragement to their offerings from them to build their, their corporate facility there, and so Nibley is trying to. there, and, uh, so Nibley is trying to, uh, put together a plan that would encourage them to, to remain here in cash value, and they are a wonderful business. The nice thing about Malouf is, is their, their facility here isn't the sales tax generating facility, and they don't do, it's not major sales, it's more warehouse and, and corporate, um, operations. And so the plan is to, to build a large corporate facility and to bring in a lot of, uh, nice, uh, income level positions. And so, to do that, it, it works under what they call tax increment financing, where, I, you know, put this up on here, I shouldn't, but, uh, put this up on the screen, and, uh... So, uh, look at these numbers here, you can see that these are the entities that are being asked to participate in this CRA. So we've got cash county, you've got the school district, Nibley City, and, uh, we'll go Nibley Cemetery District, uh, make this district have steel abatement, district have So in the property that they're looking at, I'll make sure you, uh, diagram that side right here. So in this picture, this line right here, the diagram you draw is Highway eighty-nine, ninety-one, which is, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going.
Is there anybody to get it on?
It's on your, it should be on your.
There it is.
Yeah, so this diagram here, the line on the left side is Highway eighty-nine, eighty-one, and Malouf Building that they're to have is, is down there, uh, you might recognize Olson Traders, is, is that on the highway, which, uh, which are not going to move a facility or, uh, they, they are looking at, maybe develop, uh, bring corporate offices off here to the left side, uh, here, and make plan. I can't hear the online. Is that any better? No?
Not really, you might have to grab that big mic.
All right, so this facility in Nibley.
Hold the calls.
Even closer. Is, uh, again, it's the Malouf Corporation facility that they are trying to expand their, their corporate office there, and are, we're trying to encourage them to, to complete their expansion here, rather than relocate that in, in Ohio. And, uh, and so, like I mentioned, the, the property here, you can see, this is the regular Malouf building in white. The major corporate office they want to construct is just to the left of that. And, but the plan also in Duval's, develop infr- infrastructure for, uh, these other areas that are circled in blue as, uh, other business sites that, uh, would be made available by infrastructure that would be generated through this project. So the way it works is currently, those properties for the cash school district generate a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars of property taxes. And so that's a baseline, and entering into this, we wouldn't lose any of that funding that we're currently receiving, that would continue on every year. But with the improvements that would be made at the site, it would increase that taxable, tax generating, uh, value of the property, um, an additional nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that, uh, would be generating additional property taxes. So the total amount then would be a million ninety-eight thousand dollars per year that would be generated in property taxes for all of those, those parcels. The, uh, the plan that they, they have is that they would like to enter into an agreement where to fund these improvements, these entities that are listed would participate for a fifteen-year period, donating seventy-five percent of that increased property tax amount. Like I say, so they would continue to receive the original amount they were getting, plus an additional twenty-five percent of the increase for that fifteen-year period, and then after fifteen years, they would, they would receive the entire, uh, amount of property taxes. As we looked at that, talking to them, we said fifteen years is too long for the school district to participate in something like that, and, uh, there was an option thrown out, would we consider twelve years? And, uh, we said, well, there is some of this property that would be turned into businesses that would generate sales tax. So we made the option to the, the group that, how about if we considered either going in for twelve years, and then we would receive the sales tax that was generated by these entities that, uh, start up businesses up there, or we'd consider maybe going in for ten years and let Nibley City retain the, the increased sales tax they would receive, which I still think's better for us, um, where we said, well, or they preferred that we then just go for the ten years.
Yeah, you gotta talk quiet, you gotta get closer to.
Oh, this would be for ten years is what we're considering, uh, where we would participate at a seventy-five percent level. So, yeah, what that would mean then is, instead of receiving a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars per year in property taxes for that, for that area, we would receive about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for ten years, and then after ten years, we would receive the full, almost one point one million per year of, of property taxes. So this, this project is, is going through each one of these different entities, uh, to get their approval to participate, and, uh, so they will be coming to the school district itself, and so we want to just present this to you so you, you had a, an understanding of, of what this would mean to us. Generally, we, we haven't looked very favorably at, look at going into these type of projects, but this is one where it really is, is generating new dollars, um, that we wouldn't have otherwise, and it really is not, for the most part, any sales tax, because we don't receive a penny of sales tax, given the current funding structure for education. So we looked at that, felt like it was, it was a good, a good fit if we were to enter into a project like this. And so that's what we'll, at some point, when they finish up negotiations with the other entities, uh, we'll need to come back and get final approval from the school board to, uh, to move ahead with this, if you, if you choose to or to do otherwise. Are there any questions, any of you have about that?
Just one more point of clarification, the state has offered economic assistance too. So between the state and this proposal, it's way under what Ohio is offering them, but we've got the one benefit of them wanting to stay in the valley. We think this is a, is a win-win situation, but we want you to spend time looking over it. We've entered into these before, uh, the Deloy Hansen one down on the, uh, south end of town, I think has been everything that we hoped it would be. We've had others in the past that didn't end up being what we wanted, so we're really being very careful now with what we allow to be presented, and you'll notice that we, we just didn't go along with the fifteen years. We have a kid who can go into kindergarten and graduate and not ever receive much of the benefit, if it takes fifteen years, so. So, uh, if there's, after you look at it and study it, if there's questions, uh, we can get anybody, uh, you need to come in and help explain, but, uh, because they have a team of people working with Nibley City, and, uh, we've always presented the idea of, you know, we're the, in the breakfast scenario, where you have bacon and, and eggs, we're the bacon, and the rest of them are eggs. They just put a little bit on the table, but we give our whole heart and soul to the project, because we're the biggest tax entity in, in the process. But this one does, uh, we don't lose any money of what we're already collecting, we're gonna get more, and then after ten years, it's just gonna be a benefit to the district and Nibley, and it's gonna bring a whole bunch of high-paying jobs to the, the community, the whole county, so.
What's their timeframe for this? What are they looking at here?
You know, they've kind of been on hold, waiting for this whole process, but I think as soon as they know that everybody's behind it, I think they want to rapidly go ahead, doesn't that, your understanding?
Yeah, it did say in the proposal that construction would begin either in twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three, just depending on the, how long it takes to get everything in place.
The agreement says that they, in no case will the agency trigger the first year of tax increment collection after January first, twenty-twenty-three. So it's within the next year or two, or not at all.
We've had one with North Logan City, it's never pulled, they've never pulled the trigger, and I doubt it'll ever, ever happen, but, yeah.
Was that the one done by the airport?
Well, no, this is the one for the city center.
Oh, okay.
And, yeah, I just don't think it's ever gonna go there.
Well, Mayor Dustin in Nibley is very proactive about planning for Nibley, and so.
Yeah, he is.
You would expect this to be a really good plan, put-together plan.
Yeah, he's thinking more than just Malouf, he's thinking of a whole commercial area out there.
He, he's, he's very, he's very good at planning.
Thank you, Dale.
All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda, report's agenda, is, uh, graduation discussion and assignments. And Mike is presenting this one.
All I did on this one, I had Carolyn attached today, I had each school just send me a little blurb on what's, what's going on, what does it look like, and you can see the, all five schools with their information, so I'm just giving it to you, now the board can, you can make your decisions, what you're gonna do with it at this point.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Yeah, 'cause they're, they've been kind of a moving target, but I think these are, these are in place now for you, so you can decide what you'll do.
All right, we'll make some assignments. And if we have questions, should we contact the principal or contact you?
If, if you have, if you make the decision to send the school, I contact the student or I call the principal.
All right.
If there's something you can talk a little bit more about, please, you can.
Okay. All right, well, I will contact the schools and find out how many school board speakers they would like, besides the one that we already, ones that we already know of, and then we'll make some assign, I'll make some assignments, unless you have input, anyone have requests of schools you want to go to?
Well, we kind of do it like we did last year, where we go to the school in our precinct, or where they're all, different times and places.
I don't know, let's everyone, what are your thoughts?
I guess I need to read through them and see what their plans are, and then maybe I could give you some input, Terry.
Okay, great. Everyone, uh, take, take some time before our next meeting to, um, our reg- next regular meeting, to read through them and, and let me know if you have preferences or, and I'll try to contact the principals and find out what, um, what they want as far as school board members and speaking assignments. I've already heard from Mountain Crest and Skyview about that, um, but I'll contact the other three, and then we can have a discussion in May.
Sounds good.
All right, great. Thank you, Mike, for collecting all that for us. Uh, Dale, monthly financial report.
Just a quick report, you do have the, the monthly financial report on board docs, this would be for the period ending March thirty-first. Really not a lot of change from past months, other than one more month of expenditures, but, uh, uh, so really, I, I don't have anything there, I think, to, uh, bring out, unless you had any questions. Just would report quickly, though, we did have a meeting yesterday with our bond attorney and our, our financial advisors regarding the, uh, refunding bonds that we're, we're looking to sell, and, uh, so things are moving ahead well on that. We have a presentation to Moody's next week, um, and, uh, and the whole process is looking, you know, very favorable. The last numbers we are looking at, it should generate over six million dollars of savings in our, our debt service, and, uh, the closing for that is, I think the sale will actually happen on May twenty-third, I think it is, and the closing would be on the twenty-seventh of May. But, yeah, anyway, so that, that is moving forward, they're working, you know, quickly as they can to, to make this all happen. We kind of had a short timeline in, in getting this in place by the end of the year, and it all looks really good, so.
That's excellent. Six million dollars, that's almost half of what we pay totally in debt service in a year.
Yeah, that's true, it's about thirteen million a year.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that's a big deal.
Okay, uh, anyone have any questions for Dale? All right, moving on. We will go to board member reports. Any ha- anyone have anything you want to report? Besides all the emails that we have been applying this week? And, uh, we have seen quite a few of those, so, um, I don't know that we need to discuss them here, since everybody has seen them, but, um, okay, if no one has, uh, anything they want to discuss, we'll move on to the board president report. I have two things I need to mention. We, uh, talked about at our last meeting, one of our last meetings, having, uh, another hybrid board meeting, the first meeting in May at South Cash, and, uh, Larry, I had a note that you volunteered to go to that one at South Cash, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Chris, but I, um, haven't been able to verify that with Chris. Principal Doug Snow is, uh, very supportive of that, and he said we can hold that, uh, hybrid part of the meeting in their media center at South Cash on the sixth of May. Will that work for your team? Tim?
Sixth of May.
Sixth of May, so we, our next. South Cash Media Center.
Uh, I'll have to check their light and sound.
Okay. He, Principal Snow said that, that it's already set up for that. I don't know that if he, that he knows that it's set up for what we need as far as recording. Okay, great, thank you. And we'll plan on Larry being there for sure. I'll check with Chris.
If he can, I can.
Okay. And if he can't, then you can go hybrid again.
That's fine.
Thanks, Roger. The second thing I needed to discuss is that thus far, when I checked with Carolyn at the beginning of this week, we have four applicants for the business administrator position out from outside the district and two from within. So we talked before, when we talked about a timeline for this, we talked about having a selection committee meeting on the 29th of April, which is the last Thursday of this month. Does that still work for all of you?
I will be out of town.
Okay. Do you want us to go ahead without you as just the selection committee and then you'll be here for the interviews or do you want to be here for the selection?
No, I would, I would say go ahead.
Okay. Is everyone else good for the 29th? All right, well, we will, I'll get with Carolyn and get that set up and we'll plan on that. And this closes on the 23rd, which is a week from tomorrow. And Carolyn will, I talked with her about creating the digital files for each of the applications and, and she'll send them, each application to us or as a packet, however she's going to do that. And I don't know, she may need help from you agenda to get that done. And because with what is required in those portfolios, that's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
But hopefully we'll be able to, she'll be able to get those sent out by the 26th at the latest so that we'll have a few days to at least look through them before we get together on the 29th. Unless you feel like that is too short of a timeline. How do you feel about that timeline?
How, how much is, how much is there to read in each of the packets?
Quite a bit because there's the application and then there, now I can't remember. Look in your, it's right in the front, was required. Keep going.
Letter of interest, application, resume, listing the professional and job related experiences, copy of transcripts, three letters of recommendation, written response for each of the following items, and then there's three items there.
Good.
Their personal philosophy, their experience and approach for forecasting models. What does that mean, forecasting models?
Forecasting models is what Dale does when he says, we expect this much growth.
Oh, gotcha.
And so this is what our budget should probably be and this is how much we expect in revenues and this is how much we expect for expense with that kind of growth.
I thought it had to do with weather. Just kidding, just kidding. Okay, and then the last one is what, what will be your responsibility as it relates to supporting and allocating resources to assist in the accomplishment of the district's mission, vision and goals? So there's quite a bit, Terry.
There is. So, so knowing that, how do you feel about the timeline?
I, I still think it's good, Terry, just because further we get along into May, there's going to be more and more pressure from other things.
Right, right.
And I would just assume, if, if you were all up to that, I'd, I'd rather do it sooner than.
You'd rather stay up late every night of that week and read stuff?
Yeah.
All right, anybody else have thoughts on that?
Would we meet here or at the district's office for that selection?
Well, we could meet either place. It might be easier like in the Bridger Conference Room around a table and we can do recording there. So that, except that we don't have to do recording because it's personnel.
Yeah, we don't.
We just have to have a meeting and say, and open the meeting as an open meeting and then go into closed session. And we can do that easily with the recording stuff available in the Bridger line, in the Bridger Room. So let's do it at the Bridger Room. I'll call and make sure we can schedule that.
Terry, I apologize, I haven't been through the, all the questions yet, but I will get that done, so. Thanks for sending.
And do we meet at 5:30 regular time?
Yes. Unless you, anybody wants to do something different?
Sounds good.
5:30 is good.
Okay. All right, we'll plan on the 29th then as for selection and then at that meeting decide what we'll do with interviews.
Can I go back?
Uh huh.
To our meeting at South Cash? Did you say that there were some parents from Ridgeline who want to be there and present?
There were some parents who wanted to present at Ridgeline and I will contact them to let them know that this opportunity is available again and this time we'll make the parent input or hearing from the parents, an actual agenda item instead of a public input section.
So they wanted to that night that we were out there, but, but didn't?
They didn't realize that they were supposed to speak during the public input part. They thought there was a, Brittany had told them there was an agenda item for them to speak. And so, yeah, it was, she sent us an email, sent me an email during the meeting or towards the end of the meeting and let us know that, that didn't go well. So I contacted each of, I asked her for those names of those people and contacted each of them and apologized for the mix-up in communication and, and let them know that we would be having another hybrid meeting this year in the south end of the valleys so that they could come and speak if they'd like to.
Do you need any help with that or?
No, because I have all of their email stuff, so I'll just do it through email. And, and, but how many of them will travel to South Cash for that? I don't know.
Okay.
So, because from Nibley to Hiram is a long ways.
Really? Okay.
Or so I've heard from a few parents. Okay. Well, unless any of you have any more comments about the, the hybrid meeting, BA selection meetings, then I'm done. Okay. Superintendent?
Hey. 29 days left. Everybody, we're hoping can just gut it out till the end and, and we'll get through this year. And it's been, been a wonderfully, wonderfully experience to, to see everybody pull together and get us through. And we appreciate the parental support, the student support and certainly all of our education family who's made it possible for us to get to this point. Just for information, testing for dance to sway, Mountain Crest and Ridgeline, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but we tested according to the schools, all the kids and had zero kids with any infections, so.
That's awesome.
Huh? Where was it to Ridgeline?
Ridgeline. I think we get over 800 Ridgeline for about a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
So how do, so where are the five new cases from?
They are just a case here and there, each is a high school, one of the middle schools.
Oh, so not associated with the testing to sway? Okay.
Negotiations have started, insurance, we know where we're at, we're going to have a 12% increase. You couple that with what, a 3% increase last year and divide that in half, it's not quite so bad, about a seven or eight. Insurance is something we've grappled with for a long time and we've made changes, we've been gone self-insured and we've gone with this new company. We're trying everything we can to keep those costs down, but they, they continue to rise on us. But I, I think we've made some really sound decisions in the past. This has been a little difficult week. Like to publicly thank the PIO office. They have done a marvelous job of communicating with the public and with, with the outlets and the media that have requested the information from our school district. Things happen and we've had a couple of events that have been difficult for some of our people to work through, but we appreciate, we appreciate just all the people who work with our kids on a day-to-day basis and all of our parent support. And we appreciate all of our teaching staff and, and we are trying to do, live up to our motto that one of the greatest virtues is to faithfully educate the children of others. And that's on our minds all the time. And we will work to make sure that, that all our kids have that type of experience in our schools. But 29 days will go fast. And the class of 20, 21 will be on their way. And it was just interesting, I've been out visiting classrooms and got into a classroom the other day and realized the little girl was in the first graduating class of Ridgeline High, first one to go all four years at Ridgeline High. And, no, not that, she was graduated from Ridgeline High, has now gone through college and is now teaching for us. So that's amazing that those kids are out there and going on with life and, and that's what we do. We take them for 12, 13 years and give them the best education we can and, and then they go on and do wonderful things like become teachers. Guess that's all I have.
All right. Thank you for your steady leadership in that role.
Appreciate it.
And all of you for being here. And thank you to the public, whoever is attending currently, we appreciate you listening in and watching. And we have arrived at the end of our agenda, so we will adjourn. Thank you for coming.